Okay. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Anne Hartline with the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Welcome. Candidate forums are on Zoom this year because of the pandemic. All candidates for our forums this fall received Zoom invitations and passcodes to their specific forums a few days in advance. League members will host, moderate, and time these Zoom sessions. Only the League members and the candidates themselves will be present in the Zoom sessions. No additional participants will be allowed. A brief caveat: This Zoom forum format is all new to the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. Anyone who has participated in digital events over the last six months knows that inevitably there will be technical glitches and rough spots during this forum. Often, these glitches are based entirely on an individual's physical location and/or internet service. We urge candidates and viewers to be patient and understanding if someone's screen freezes, a speaker's words come out strangely, a participant gets bumped out and has to rejoin, etc. Kindness and a sense of humor are essential to this type of event. There's a strong chance that I may experience some internet challenges. For that reason, it may be necessary for me to turn off my video. If that happens, please know that I'm still here and actively participating in this forum. This forum is being recorded and aired for anyone to view on Access Humboldt, the League's YouTube channel, and on our Facebook page. Links to the recorded forums and schedules will be advertised and made available to the public by the League. This video recording is the property of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. The link to the video may be shared, but no portion of this video may be used for promotional or advertising purposes by candidates or organizations. Tonight, the League presents the candidates for election to the Fortuna City Council. The three candidates for two open positions on the council are Tammy Trent, incumbent, Dean Glazier, incumbent, and Mike Losi. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is dedicated to providing impartial information to voters about candidates and the political process in order to help them make informed decisions. This is part of our citizen education program. The purpose of a candidate forum is to give citizens an opportunity to hear the candidates' views on a variety of issues. The League of Women Voters does not endorse candidates or political parties. So we will begin this forum with opening statements, one-minute opening statements from each of our candidates. And the order of opening statements has been predetermined by a random drawing of lots. So Tammy Trent, we begin now with your opening statement.
Thank you. Good morning or good evening. My name is Tammy Trent. I own a business in Fortuna for over 25 years. I've been on Fortuna City Council since 2012. Prior to that, I served on the planning commission for 10 years. I currently am serving as mayor pro tem. It is important to me to bring new businesses to Fortuna. We need to be looking ahead to ensure economic development while continuing to support our current businesses. I have successfully lobbied for Measure Z funds from the Board of Supervisors to provide Fortuna with a school resource officer and a drug task force officer. I have fought for annual renewal of these funds with success every year. My goal with reelection is to get these crucial positions permanently funded. I am well-informed before making decisions and will always protect the best interests of our city and citizens. I am looking forward to serving Fortuna for the next four years. We are a true community, and I love Fortuna.
Thank you. Mike Losi, we'd love to hear your opening statement, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Losi, and I am running for the City Council for the city of Fortuna. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I have the proven leadership qualities, experience, and common sense in decision-making, which set me apart from the other candidates. I served four years on the Fortuna City Council with two years as mayor pro tem and eight years on the Fortuna High School Board of Trustees with three years as president of the board. I have 34 years of law enforcement experience, having started my career in Fortuna as a police officer. So I have unwavering support for Fortuna and the public safety and welfare of our citizens. From having served on the council before, I've always made decisions believing in fiscal stewardship and knowing that the city must effectively manage our tax dollars. Please vote for Mike Losi for Fortuna City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Dean Glazer, we'll hear your opening statement. Dean, did I pronounce your name correctly?
You got 100% there.
Thank you. Good. Go for it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Dean Glazer. I have lived in Fortuna for 49 years. I've been married for 53 years and have three grown wonderful sons. I graduated from San Francisco State in 1967 with a major in biology and a minor in Spanish, and then earned my elementary teacher credential in January in 1969. I am a veteran, having joined the United States Navy Reserves in 1967 and honorably discharged in 1974. In 1998, I became a Fortuna senior citizens on patrol volunteer and served with the police department for nine and a half years. I was a member of the Fortuna Fire Department for 15 years. I am a patriot, a constitutionalist, a conservative, and believe in the rule of law. I embrace truth, justice, and the American way. I have served your council as a councilman for 16 and a half years. I have never had an agenda and have always served you as the citizens first. I would greatly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. We will now begin... I will start with questions submitted by the community. And let me get my paperwork organized here. Our first, Mike Losi, you will be the one to answer the first question. So the question is, what do you like best and value most about living in Fortuna?
Thank you. The motto for Fortuna is "The Friendly City." And it certainly is the friendly city. It is a great city to live in. It is the best city in Humboldt County, if not Northern California. And the people in Fortuna are just amazing when it comes to helping each other. We can count on, if we need assistance, on neighbors and friends within the community, people that are evacuated, and this is a great example from this last fire episode, people that are evacuated from those fires, if they need assistance, they can count on many people from Fortuna to assist them in anything that they would need. Fortuna is a safe city. We look out for each other. And it is, like they say, the best place to live. Thank you.
Dean Glazer, your comments on this question, please.
Thank you. I came from a town of 13,000, so I know that the same caveat and quality of town size brings upon the best of small-size warmth, closeness. The citizens have a strong bond that comes together sometimes in a need of giving or of protecting each other when something, a negative event occurs. And at this size, we have an excellent council and an excellent city staff and an excellent working force and a police department that are doing an immense amount of good things for our city. So that I value the most. Thank you very much.
And Tammy Trent, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. Fortuna is a true community. We all look out for each other, participate in all of our activities in Fortuna. Fortuna's got some of the best events in the whole county, and we have so many volunteers that make these things happen. It's a great place to live. Everybody looks out for each other. We have a good fire department. We have a good police department. Fire department is full volunteer. If somebody needs something, everybody's there for it. If there's any kind of disaster, everybody pulls together to take care of it. It's just really a great place to live, a great place to raise your children. Our children's sporting events are so well-attended. Everybody supports those volunteer coaches. We just really all pull together, and it's a friendly city. You walk down the street and people say hello to you. You go to the grocery store, you see people you know. So truly, Fortuna is the best city in the county to live.
All right. For our next question, we will begin with Dean Glazer. Other than the COVID-19 pandemic, what do you feel are the top three issues or challenges facing the city of Fortuna?
First and foremost, trying to work with Mrs. Dr. Frankovich with the Department of Health and Human Services. That seems as though she's restrained by Sacramento's restrictions. She is a spokesperson, but I think each individual city should be able to control and mandate what their opening or closing policies are. We do have those in, but she actually does veto us when we make an effort to try to open up and have more stores open up. I would love to see us open up sooner and have all the businesses open up sooner. There's not been enough done yet. The numbers are against us when the Dr. Frankovich uses those. She has never actually divulged each of the city's infection rate. So I would like to know that first before our city actually makes a decision of actually going against what she believes in. Thank you very much.
Tammy Trent, your response to this question, please.
I would say community development is one thing that we really have to concentrate on, bringing more businesses into Fortuna to help sustain our economy. I think that's pretty important. Another one is our PERS, our retirement. We have a smoothing that we have to do, which really takes a lot from our budget. It's kind of complicated to understand that the retirement system, but that is a pretty serious thing according to the budget. I don't... Fortuna doesn't have anything, I think, that really just really stands out as being a really, really big problem. So, gosh, I don't know how to answer that right now. Can't think about a good answer.
All right. And finally, Mike Losi, how would you respond to this question, please?
Thank you. The first issue or priority that I can think of would be the city budget. We have to bring in a balanced budget, and with the sales tax revenues in a decline because of the pandemic, we have to search for ways to balance expenditures with revenues while keeping our excellent services intact. The second priority, being tied to the first, is passing Measure G. This is an extension of the current tax we are already paying, and it will be very important to our city. So please join me in voting yes on Measure G. The third priority is putting together a plan to entice development on the old mill site property. It's a perfect spot for commercial, residential, or industrial development with easy access to the freeway as well as into the city. Discussion about this site has been ongoing for 15 years. It's time to take some action. Thank you.
All right. For our next question, we will begin with Dean Glazer. What can you and the city do to create more affordable and low-income housing in Fortuna?
The effort by the city in the past was to partnership with Danco Construction. And at that time, we had redevelopment money that was not being looked at as a means of balancing the state's budget. We accomplished three wonderful projects, two on Smith Lane, which are the Stockton projects, and one on School Street, which was a Roner Park/Roner Creek facility. We try to embrace any developer that does come into the city to be work with them for working on a project. But since the redevelopment money was taken away, we don't really have any means as a city to support a project going in place. So currently, right now, we're just sort of sitting and waiting for a developer to come forward, and then we will end up that process. Thanks very much.
Mike Losi, your thoughts on this matter, please.
Thank you. I think the City Council can support the idea of housing, affordable housing development, through city staff. We can encourage city staff to locate parcels. That would be perfect or good to develop some residential and both residential as well as single and multifamily residences. I think it's up to the City Council to take a lead in this and to encourage city staff to move forward in locating these parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tammy Trent, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. Dean did a good job of giving the history of our low income. City staff has already identified all the properties in town that are available for building and the zoning for those, whether it's multifamily, single-family. So that's already all mapped out. It's just we've tried to keep our fees reasonable to make housing affordable, but the city itself can't... We don't have money to give out for or to loan for low-income housing. But we just try to encourage and try to make the process easy, to get permits to do it, to try to keep fees reasonable, and just encourage all kinds of housing.
All right. For our next question, we will begin with Tammy Trent. And the question is, what is the one most important change that you would like to see implemented in Fortuna over the next six months?
I would actually like to see Fortuna going back to being able to have events again, being able to socialize again, being able to be out in the community again. That's what I miss most, is having chamber mixers, being able to interact with the community, being able to be out there and be personable.
Dean Glazer, how would you respond to this question?
You're doing a great job with my name, thanks. I was trying to think of something that would actually be necessary to change. Our city is functioning so well with the current council and the current staff. I can't see any reason why we need to change as elected officials, but the COVID crisis and the restrictions that are secured in place that have been once again controlled by Dr. Frankovich, that needs to cease and end. It would be wonderful to not have those curtailments placed on our heads. I want to go back. I want to go back the way we used to be, you know, back in the last December, January. I mean, I totally agree with Tammy that COVID controls need to cease and desist, and we need to get back on our life. Thank you.
And Mike Losi, your comments, please.
Thank you. I totally support being done with the COVID issues and problems that we have. But beyond that, I really believe that the city needs to work hard in attracting new business. We're going to go into a situation, hopefully sooner than later, where businesses will open up. Just today, the county announced that we were moving from the orange tier to the yellow tier and into the lowest designation as far as COVID threat. So hopefully, businesses will be opening up a little bit more, and we should be able to attract more business into Fortuna. And I think that those would be things that we would need to do within this next six months. Thank you.
For our next question, we will begin with Mike Losi. The question is, many Black Indigenous people of color individuals have voiced concerns about feeling unwelcome in Fortuna. How would you take steps to change this?
Thank you. Well, much of the inequality issues that have been raised have been raised regarding law enforcement. I think that in general, law enforcement needs to have additional training in communication, in sensitivity, in learning how other cultures are different from ourselves, and in learning how to communicate with different cultures. I don't know how much of an issue it is in Fortuna, but I know that it's an issue in many, many other parts of California. I think transparency is another big issue. I believe body cams and dash cams are a necessity, and those have to be used and to have a policy of use that all officers understand. Thank you.
Tammy Trent, your response to this question, please.
That's a hard one, because there's good and bad in every city and every place that you go. For the most part, I think people try to be friendly in Fortuna. I personally have not seen any of that, but I know it's everywhere. I know that people do deal with it. I think everybody is really trying to be a little bit more, I don't know, be able to get along. As far as the police department, we haven't had any complaints about racial stuff with them. I do know that they go to quite a bit of training on that. And we did have a peaceful protest in Fortuna to try to bring everybody together to help make everybody feel welcome. So, you know, I think everybody just needs to work a little bit harder on trying to make everybody feel welcome, doesn't matter what your color or race is.
And Dean Glazer, your comments, please.
Thank you very much. It's unfortunate that a few individuals that are colored that entered into businesses and there was an interaction with the owner or the employees of the business are being used as a reflection of the entire city of Fortuna. I really beg to differ that this is not the presence of what Fortuna gives in reception of the public. If there was an agenda by these individuals that wanted to make some statement, currently almost seemed like the same time as a Black Lives Matter was occurring in Eureka, then I would question their reason and why they did that. Our city is very welcoming of every person of color, creed, race, and I don't think there should be something that's discussed on a large scale just beyond individual occurrence. Thank you.
All right. Our next question, and we'll start with Tammy Trent. How can the city recruit new businesses in Fortuna?
We have a Fortuna Business Improvement District that the city supports, and that is part of her main job, is to actually try to recruit businesses, locate locations that are available, and try to bring some in. Fortuna tries to make it easy for a business to start. We don't have the funds at this time. At one time, we did have somebody that was hired to try to bring businesses in, but we don't have anybody, or any one person, that that's a particular job now. But I think for the most part, we really depend on Fortuna Business Improvement District to try to recruit businesses. We're currently, the city manager and her are meeting currently this week to talk about some of that and how to bring a little bit more in. It is an important issue.
Mike Losi, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. I think one, a couple ways that Fortuna can entice new business into town. The city can designate a contact person at City Hall to help businesses navigate through the red tape of applying and receiving CARE Act funds. Businesses that are looking at coming into Fortuna will look at something like that and know that the city does care about new business and would like new business coming in. In addition, we have many Spanish-speaking business owners who find it very difficult maneuvering through the language barriers of not only filling out state and federal forms, but also just city forms and correspondence from the city. None of that is in Spanish. I think if the city were to change in those fashions, then more business would be enticed to locate here in Fortuna.
And Dean Glazer, your comments, please.
All right. I'm going to start off and waste about 15 seconds. I want you to notice there's about five or six of these questions have already been pre-orchestrated to be answered by the candidates. And it's unfortunate that your staff was hoodwinked, and I'm hoping that it doesn't continue through this forum. We welcome all businesses and inquiries to the city. There's F-Bid and Chamber are contact points, and the city has pre-application or inquiries. They can follow through with these people, but these people will choose to come to Fortuna, not by advertising, but wanting to be here. Thank you very much.
For our next question, we will begin with Mike Losi. Here's the question, sorry. Do you think commercial cannabis sales should be allowed in Fortuna? And please explain your answer.
At this point, I think that there are a lot of unanswered questions about bringing cannabis into Fortuna. It was a short time ago that Fortuna turned down Prop 64, and we have ordinances against any cannabis sales. The only thing cannabis allowed in Fortuna is medicinal or cultivation, six plants or less, and they must be indoors. So I think that there are a lot of issues that have to be examined before we start looking at bringing cannabis businesses, such as dispensaries, into Fortuna. One of those issues also would be the business opinion on this. Would businesses open their arms to having dispensaries next door? I think those are questions that need to be answered before we look at bringing a business of that type in. Thank you.
Dean Glazer, your thoughts on this matter, please.
I'm the last of the council members that actually voted 5-0 to ban any kind of cannabis dispensaries or dispensing locations. And I continue to hold that firm no in place. I don't think it's appropriate for Fortuna to lose its image of what it is and how we stand against the cannabis products. Let the other cities benefit from the sales of those and the implementing of dispensaries. Prop 64 was five plants, not six, and no one took... Prop 64 was five plants, not six, and no one took out the permit that we had that was for $100. So the entire city has actually turned up their nose to the city's compliance request. And so we'll probably end up readdressing that with the implementing of the ordinances violations that we voted on last night. Thank you very much.
Tammy Trent, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. When we passed the ordinance banning everything when it first became legal, we did that because we wanted to see how things worked out in other cities with the intention of revisiting the ordinance. We did have a plan to revisit that right before COVID hit, to have a big workshop. I think it's important to take community input before making such a major decision on this. And from what I'm hearing, for the most part, people really don't want a dispensary so much as they wouldn't mind having maybe some non-impacting businesses. But that's something I think that we really need to have the workshop and see what the community really wants. I don't think, you know, we represent the whole community, and I don't think that's a decision that should be just made by five people in the community. I really think we need community input on something as important as that. Thank you.
All right, for our next question, we will begin with Dean Glazer. How do you feel the city of Fortuna has done in dealing with problems of homelessness and poverty? What changes would you make?
The last 25 years has been an influx and an increase in homeless people in Fortuna. So unfortunate that they find the verbiage of the friendly for city, Fortuna City as a trigger point on their cell phones. So therefore, they show up. It's also been supported by San Francisco and Oakland sending them with $100 in their pocket to offload on the Amtrak. We do have a POP officer that is, addresses the issue of homeless, goes to the encampments and makes an attempt to inform them that they are not welcome in the city, that there are other agencies and facilities in Eureka that can actually help them. It is not the responsibility of the taxpayers to pay any money for the homeless. That is a social services issue with the Department of Health and Human Services. Thank you.
Tammy Trent, your response, please.
And could you repeat the question for me, please?
Certainly. How do you feel the city of Fortuna has done in dealing with problems of homelessness and poverty? What changes would you make?
I'm dealing with homeless. We work a lot with Riverlife Services, who the owner of Riverlife himself was once homeless, and we contract with him. He goes out with our officers, and also we have social service that goes out with our officers, visits the homeless camps, tries to get the people the help they need, but they have to want it in order to get it. A lot of them are drug addicted or mentally ill and don't want to be off the street. They want to be there, and you can't force them into doing that. But we do our best to try to offer them the services that they do need. Riverlife Services have gotten quite a few of them into programs to help them or back to their families wherever they originally came from. So we're really, you know, we've got those officers that work with them a lot. So I think we're really trying to keep a good handle on it.
And Mike Lozey, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. The city should investigate bringing social services and mental health experts and teaming up with law enforcement, directing their efforts to a particular person or camp, which frequently comes to the attention of city officials. In this way, individual homeless people could receive the specialized mental health and social services resources that these experts could provide. Those things have not been done. Social service has gone out on occasion with the Riverlife folks, but there hasn't been a concerted effort to target or to look at individual people or camps that are really causing most of the calls for law enforcement. Of course, providing them with assistance could only work if the homeless would agree to the service. But with the cold weather coming on, I think more of these folks might be inclined to accept that help.
For our next question, we will begin with Tammy Trent. The question is, what can the city do to better support struggling Fortuna businesses, especially in regards to CARES Act funding?
Fortuna has tried to help our businesses through the pandemic as much as we possibly can. We did arrange when restaurants got shut down for only outdoor seating to waive encroachment fees to give them over the, or same-day encroachment fees, loan them picnic tables for their outdoor seating. The cities, the money that the city has received for CARES, we haven't applied for the loan one, the part to loan out. We've only so far received part of the reimbursement for our expenses. So as far as setting up that program, I don't think we've done anything about that yet. We're still trying to get through this. So hopefully, we will be jumping into that one next.
Our next response, oh, I'm sorry. Mike Lozey, you will be the next responder here. Your comments, please.
Thank you. I think the city could designate a contact person at City Hall to help navigate, help businesses navigate through the red tape of applying and applying for and receiving CARE Act funds. That person could be a conduit between the businesses in the county or any state or federal agency, ensuring that our businesses receive their fair share of funding during this COVID pandemic. That person could also assist the Spanish-speaking business owners, or we could bring in a Spanish speaker to help those businesses, as I said before. I think we could help the business community to navigate through these kinds of issues the best that they can and the best that the city can help them. Thank you.
And now Dean Glazer, your comments, please, on this question.
Thanks very much. The government sent the state, and the state sent the CARE funding that was justified for our city size. What the city did was a direct negative impact reporting of what had affected the city itself. The CARE funding that was going to be necessary if a business wanted to get some funding was an obligation by the business. I'm sure the city had the information and probably the forms to be able to give them to individually apply for that money, but it was not, as far as I understand, they're not the obligation of the city to give the funding that the city received to the businesses to assist them. It was an individual responsibility by business people. Thank you.
For our next question, we will begin with Mike Lozey. Do you support Measure G? Why or why not?
Yes, absolutely, I support Measure G. That measure, if passed, will support the Fortuna City budget. That money will go to supplying additional personnel to keep the city services that we've got. It will go toward road maintenance, keeping our infrastructure intact. So it goes to a number of different funds within the city. And Measure G is not a new tax. It is an extension of the tax that we have. We absolutely need to have this measure passed. So as I said before, I ask you to please join me in passing Measure G. Thank you.
Dean Glazer, your comments on this question, please.
I'm going to do something unusual. I am in total support of Measure G, but I also want to dedicate my 50 seconds left to Tammy Trent.
All right. Tammy Trent, your comments and response to this question, please.
Measure G is very important to the city. Measure E, the current one we have, Measure G is just an extension of that. I worked very hard on that one. The mayor and I basically brought this. We went down, we got some education on how to pass a tax measure. We talked to another city who did this, one of their did on their own, and we organized workshops to get this to go through and pass. We knew how important it was to the city. The majority of the cities in California now do have individual tax measures because the full amount of that money goes to your city, and it stays in your city. It has been extremely vital to Fortuna. It balances our budget. It gives us two, the two detectives that are able to solve crimes, work with homeless, do all of the investigating and stuff like that because they don't have to do patrol. So they can solve crimes, they can help the homeless, they can do all those extra things that we have. We now have a code enforcement officer that goes out and takes care of houses that are blight or a danger to the community because of too much garbage or too much fire hazard, and that has been very successful. We have a community service officer. We have a parks and rec director now. We have money to get grants. We've got millions of dollars in grants just because we have the match to go with it. Those are things that we wouldn't normally have gotten done. The Fortuna Boulevard will no longer flood because we got a grant that takes care of all of that. So it's extremely important to Fortuna and very successful in what it's done. And I do hope that the citizens of Fortuna will see that and vote for Measure G.
All right, for our next question, we will begin with Dean Glazer. What are your proactive plans for economic recovery for the coming year?
Get away from the secure-in-place, have it cease and desist, let all the businesses return to where they used to be, have the restaurants open back up again, let the people live their lives. If they so choose to wear a mask, that's their choice. If you are an age bracket, looking at me, it's my choice to go outside or not. But I totally embrace the city returning back the way it used to be prior to this issue of secure-in-place. And that's as good as it's going to get. It's going to be up to each individual businessperson and each individual person who shops or lives in the city to comply or pick and choose how they want to adapt to the openness. Thank you very much.
Mike Lozey, your response to this question, please.
Thank you. I think as soon as possible, we need to get back to all of those events that we talked about earlier and just open up our businesses for, you know, the revenue to start flowing back into the city. I think that people are ready for this to be over with, and I think that Fortuna needs to draw in people from all over Humboldt County, if not California, on all of these events that we have through the year. And once this COVID is over with, we need to show those, these folks that we are a friendly city and that we can put on these events that they would want to come to and have fun. Thank you.
And Tammy Trent, your response, please.
As I said earlier, Fortuna is a true community, and we do try to support each other and our businesses. As far as the city, we did take a pretty aggressive, when we were planning the budget cuts, not hiring some of the positions that have been previously open, making some cutbacks to try to prepare for the city part for that a little bit. But we do need to get back into, you know, as Mike said, our community events are big for Fortuna. They bring a lot of people into town. They make everybody happy and cheerful, and it's just, it's enjoyable, and it's good for the businesses. It's good for the city. It's good for making everybody happy. We just need to get back to normal life again so we can start building, you know, businesses back up and start recovering. But for the most part, Fortuna has supported our businesses even through the COVID. Thank you.
All right, our next question, we will begin with Tammy Trent. What experience do you bring to the city council that makes you a uniquely qualified candidate?
I actually am quite involved in the state level and with, through the League of California Cities and the Public Safety Committee. So I represent the whole northern division from Cloverdale up to Crescent City and into Lake County for public safety, anything that has to do with police, fire, any emergency stuff, any new bills or anything that come up. I'm the representative for this area for that. So that makes me a little bit unique or different. I'm strong for law enforcement. I support them, they support me. I think it's important to build, you know, build all of that. And just I have a lot of experience now on the city council, and I'm comfortable with it now. I'm comfortable with the knowledge that I've learned and moving on, moving forward. Thank you.
Mike Lozey, your response, please.
Thank you. With 34 years in law enforcement, and many of those years at the county level, having worked in the district attorney's office, I have come in contact and worked with many county and state departments. Having been on the city council, I was a member on many of the committees that council members take part in. So I have many experiences as far as REDEC with, you know, several of the committees that we have, that we have in the city that we've become partners with. I also have experience in bargaining, having been with the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department and the Fortuna Police Employees Association, both on the management side as well as on the employee side. So I bring unique experience to the table. Thank you.
And Dean Glazer, your comments on this question, please.
This was one of the questions asked yesterday. I bring history. I began my 16 and a half years in 2002. I can remember everything that's going on to the best of my memory. If I fail to remember, I'll ask Mel Birdie or Doug Strel. I am trained and knowledgeable in all the protocol and policies of the city and how it works, and that is worth its weight in gold. Both of us incumbents have that as a skill set. And I'm also, I have the partnership with the other elected officials and the other councils. Some of them I have not met personally, but we all have crossed the bridge and united together. Whereas before, prior to 2002, Fortuna unfortunately was a city isolated by itself because of our elected officials at that time. I'm, I, I want, I want the public to know that the incumbents are the best choice today. Thank you very much.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mike Lozey. Do you foresee or recommend any significant changes to policing in Fortuna as a response to the nationwide protests?
Thank you. I think I stated before that I think it's important for the city to continue with updated training for the police department. I think it's important that some of that training be in the area of communication. I think that without ongoing training, the city, the police department, we fall kind of back on new methods and new ways of communicating with people and dealing with people. I don't see as far as a major issue in relationships between the police department and the citizens of Fortuna or visitors to Fortuna. Thank you.
Dean Glazer, your comments on this, please. Dean Glaser, your comments on this, please.
Thank you. Currently, we are, because of Measure Z, with all the work that Tammy Trent has done and for Measure E with the extra officers that we have placed on our salary, our police department is full. We are making an effort to have another facility on, on Newburgh and Roanaville Road turned into a, the full location facility that would be the central point for all of our activity. Unless we have more funding that comes forward, which we do not, we pretty much have to go with what we've accomplished over the last four years and the last two years. And once again, it's been successful so far. We hope to be able to get, make it better in the future. Thank you.
And Tammy Trent, your thoughts on this matter, please.
Fortuna has just recently hired a new police chief who's very strong into community policing, which is very good. He's getting out in the community. We have a school resource officer that goes to the schools and, and it's, I think that's real important because children are learning at a young age that police officers aren't bad people. She does really fun things with her and they all really, really love her. Our police department has a lot of diversity training. So they do do, you know, they do have a lot of training above and beyond what they're required to do. They also have in-house training. I really feel strongly that this new police chief is really good for the police department. He really does have a lot of good ideas and really wants to keep the community involved with the police department and make it more of an open door thing. And so there's more interaction between law enforcement and the community. Good, good reenactment. Thank you.
In order to finish this forum on time, this will be our last and final question before we get into closing statements. And for this, we will begin with Dean Glaser. So the question is, what would be your primary goal if elected?
Oh, last question. Great. I am fully satisfied with the five members that we have on our council. The addition of Mike and Jeremy in 2018 complimented what we needed. We have accomplished a lot. There are no needs to change what we have as a council makeup. We are going forward with Merritt Perry, our city manager, a finance officer. And the people that are necessary are there. It's just a matter of going to a meeting and actually implementing what the changes and the improvements are going to be, which are none. So I'm hoping that the public realizes that, that both incumbents are excellent in their position and need to be be reelected. Thank you very much.
Tammy Trent, your answer to this question, please.
My goals over the next four years, as I really think economic development is extremely important and we really do need to try to get some more businesses into Fortuna. Businesses that will complement the businesses that we currently have, still I supporting those businesses. I also want to get, I have a good working relationship with our supervisors. And that's, I have to go every year to have the funding reallocated for the two officers through Measure Z, which is our drug task force officer and our school resource officer. I would like to get those permanently funded so we don't have to go ask for those positions and sometimes we really have to fight for the funding and it would be nice to not have to do that because those two positions are extremely vital to the whole Ill River Valley. The drug task force officer works the whole county and our school resource officer works the whole Ill River County. So it would be nice to be able to get those permanently funded and those are my main goals. Thank you.
And Mike Losi, your comments on this last question, please.
Thank you. I think that the primary goal would be to come in with a balanced budget. I think that financial stewardship is an extremely important area for any council person. I think that those positions that are funded by Measure Z are very important. And we do have to keep working with the county board of supervisors, which I have done both in my job as a law enforcement officer with the county of Humboldt as well as a city council person. So I think that with the budget being balanced, we can continue with these programs, with these positions and move forward with those. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll begin the final phase of this candidate forum with a one-minute closing statement from each of the candidates. So we, Dean Glaser, we will begin with your closing statement, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Dean Glaser. My oath of allegiance to my city as a councilman is my binding obligation and commitment. I represent all Fortuna citizens equally and have done so for the last 16-plus years. I vote with 100% freedom from any controlling group or people who want payback from campaign donations. I have never chosen to accept donations from anyone. This has kept my character honest and sincere and true to my councilman's duties. My voting record is constant, whether out any wavering or fence walking to appease people. I am hardcore in my beliefs and have dedicated my 16 years to defending the city from liability threats and other forms of financial loss. I will ask the difficult questions and not back down, even when those questions may damage my character. I will fight for what I feel is right and I will fight against issues that I feel are wrong. Please vote for Dean Glaser, Dean Glaser, Dean Glaser. Thank you.
Tammy Trent, we'll now enjoy your closing statement, please. Oh, unmute yourself, please. Tammy?
Sorry.
That's okay. You can start again, please.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain why I am the best candidate for city council. We have had a challenging year and it's not over yet. It is important for the council members to have experience and vision necessary to keep our community safe functioning, safe and functioning under a balanced budget. I am proud to ask for your vote because I know I am the right person for this job. No one will work harder for you on, or for you on your behalf than I will. Your vote for me is a vote for a stronger Fortuna, a stronger business development environment and a stronger and safer community. I not only support the Fortuna Police Employees Association, but they support me and, and you can trust me to continue to support public safety in our community. We are a true community and I love Fortuna. Thank you very much.
And our final, Mike Losi, you'll give us the final closing statement, please.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this chance to reach the voters of Fortuna. With my proven leadership qualities and experience, I am the best choice for the city council of Fortuna. During the four years that I was on city council, with two years as mayor pro temp, as well as my tenure on the Board of Trustees at Fortuna High School, my common sense approach in addressing problems and issues greatly assisted those councils and boards in reaching appropriate decisions. We do need a new voice on the Fortuna City Council and we need a change from the incumbents that we have here. I know how to represent Fortuna in the best interest of our city and our citizens. Our city must manage our tax dollars for the best use in protecting public safety, promoting businesses and providing recreational opportunities for all people. I'm asking you to vote for me, Mike Losi, for the Fortuna City Council because I am the best choice. Thank you.
This concludes our candidate forum for this evening. Thank you to all you candidates for your willingness to run for an important local office and for taking the time to answer questions from the public here in this forum. To those of you who are watching the forum, we appreciate your participation and your interest in finding out about the candidates on your ballot. Thank you for viewing this Zoom presentation. Please remember to vote on or before November 3rd. Make democracy work. Thank you all very much and good evening.